Good morning. Welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. Today is Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is ten a.m. Commissioner Cook is absent today, but we believe we have four members of the court present, so we have a quorum, and at this time, this meeting is called order. Everyone will please rise for the introduction that will be delivered by Commissioner Kirkendall, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Your having the thought, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings of our life, what we've lifted up our nation today. God, we just pray that you protect us, Lord, as a nation, we lifted up our law enforcement, God, we pray Psalm ninety-one over them, or that you protect those that protect us. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please, as the members of the court, I want to get down to item number seven, the reason I think most everybody's here. I know Judge Thomas needs to get back to work, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's do that. Item seven, special recognition of personnel and officials for meeting years of service milestones as follows. First is Miss Sharon Hamilton, the three fifty-sixth Judicial District Court reporter, right?
That's it.
All right, Judge Thomas, you want to bring her on up?
Don't go fall. The high heels.
How are you all this morning?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Real something.
Good morning.
Revoked.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Judge. Thank y'all. It's been a pleasure.
Hey, Judge, the newspaper would like to get a group picture with everybody, maybe, I don't know if we can fit in here, but maybe in the dome, y'all could go there and do a group picture afterwards. Is that good with everybody?
Yeah.
Mr. Aiken, is that good with you?
Yes.
All right.
With everybody?
Whatever everybody wants to do is fine with us. If y'all want to do it in here, we can do that, whatever.
What time y'all gonna do that?
As soon as we recognize everybody who wants a picture.
Okay.
Is that good with you?
Yeah, yes.
Can we take it?
Yeah.
Let's do it now?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, next is Michael McConaughey, in the Technology Department, being recognized for five years of service. Morning, Mr. Tupper.
Morning. Mike, I'd like to thank you for, you know, five years of dedicated service to the Technology Department, and look forward to the next five, ten, fifteen.
All right, next is Joyce Lane, in the Treasurer's Office, being recognized for fifteen years of service. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams.
Good morning, Harry.
Ms. Lane.
Joyce has been with us, was been with the county fifteen years. She's been, she started in the District Clerk's office, and then moved down to us thirteen years ago. We're glad to have her. She's very loyal and dedicated. Hope she'll stay in our direction.
Rejoice.
And then next is Catherine, although we call her Kathy Brown. And she is the court clerk for Justice of the Peace Precinct Three, and she'll be recognized for twenty years of service. Judge, y'all want to come on up? She started when she was twelve.
Yeah. This Kathy Brown, for twenty years' service to the JP three office, and we couldn't live without her, so.
Thank you.
We appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
And then next is Judge Melissa, we call her Missy. Melissa Minton, she is the Justice of the Peace Precinct Five, and she's being recognized for twenty-five years of service. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to hide this, but now everybody will see me hobbling down here. No, that's okay. Very honored. So, congratulations. You started out in the Sheriff's Office, right?
Correct, yes, sir.
And you worked there for how long?
Ten years.
Ten years, and you went to Judge Cummings' office?
Correct.
And you were his court clerk, and he said, he's doing such a great job, you should just run and take it over.
Right. He decided to retire, let me go.
There you go. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. And then Commissioner Cooper's gonna come up and recognize Judge Brewer. Come on up, Judge, for thirty years of service, right?
Yep.
That is awesome.
It's an honor for me to represent this, not only to a friend, but a brother. And they asked me to give a speech, but I said, I'm not going to. I'm away for another thirty years.
They're on that table to your left. How do y'all want to handle the picture?
Let's just get them all, six of them.
Everybody that's got a certificate, will y'all come right up in the front? Y'all want us in the picture or out?
Yeah.
Okay.
If y'all don't mind, I'd like to get y'all in order. Judge Brewer, if I can get you on the left here, and then Ms. Minton here, Kathy here, Joyce next, and Michael, and then Sharon. Does that be okay? Okay, that's great, yeah.
First time we got it done right, ain't it? And we didn't have a wing, tell me what.
Y'all smile, one, two, three. Let me do another, make sure everybody's eyes open, and smiling, one, two, three. Thank y'all very much.
Once again, on behalf of the court, we just really appreciate all of you, and thank you for your years of service.
Congratulations, Judge.
They're so dedicated, they're all headed off to work. All right, let's go back up to item number three, considering possibly approved the March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting amendments as presented by County Beckton, County clerk. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, consider approval of request to cancel all registered claims from March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, and approval of cash statement, all presented by Mrs. McWilliams. Good morning again.
Good morning. I'm asked in the court to release me in the liability of one million, five hundred eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-four dollars and thirty cents. On our cash report and general checking, we have one million, two hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. First Financial Bank Special Money Market, twenty-seven million, one hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. And Textpool General, three hundred thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. Our total in cash funds of twenty-eight million, eight hundred fifteen thousand, eight hundred fourteen dollars and fifty-three cents.
Motion for this present. I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. Item five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by Mrs. Gore, county auditor. Good morning, Ms. Gore.
Good morning. The pre and previous expenditures from March the thirteenth through the fourteenth is a hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and thirty cents. Pre and previous expenditures from March the twentieth through the twenty-first is six hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. Expenditures through court today are eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. We have in a list, list of an additional bill for our health dental life of three hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and eight cents, for a total of expenditures and transfers of two men, ten thousand, one dollar and sixty-two cents. Gross payroll from March the twenty-first is six hundred and six thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-two cents, for a total transfer of one man, forty-nine thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars and ninety-three cents.
Motion to pay the bill?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is also Mrs. Gore, considering possibly approved amendments and transfers to the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget as presented. Let me share my screen here, as soon as I figure it out. I hadn't done it in a while, so. I spoke with Mrs. Gore about an hour ago, and normally, she would read each one of these line items off, but if it's okay with the members of the court, I've asked her to allow me to share this on the screen here, where we can all see it. And that means everybody at the bench should be able to see it, and then everybody in the public here can see it. And it's also being livestreamed, and she's gonna hit the highlights of these transfers, correct? Is that okay with everybody else?
Yes, sir.
All right, do I have the right one pulled up? Can you see it?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, just tell me when to, when to stop, and I will.
This has, is a budget amendment for our health insurance, when we increased our contribution. So, the County Clerk Preservation Fee Fund is twelve thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars, and that's coming from that fund balance. The General Fund is one hundred eighty-nine thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars, and that's coming from the General Fund balance. Roden Bridge is sixty-eight thousand, fifty-three dollars, and that's also coming from Roden Bridge Fund balance, and the County Attorney Pre-Trial Diversion Fund balance, in the amount of eight thousand, seven hundred dollars.
And again, that has to do with the health insurance increases that we did mid-year?
Correct. These are our budget amendments, and if it's okay, I would like to read these two pages, because these are the ones that, when we have to create new accounts, we have to increase our expenses and offset it by a revenue account, when the departments can't cover within their budget.
And if there's any questions along the way, by any elected official, department head, commissioner, let's just stop and answer those along the way, instead of trying to go back and answer those. Because I'm, I won't comment about that off the bat when you read that one.
Our District Clerk Preservation Fee, we need to create a revenue line item, reimbursement's one nine, one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. In the General Fund, the County Judge's budget, he, we're increasing our expenses and visiting judge by three thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars, and we're taking that from our, or we're gonna increase our revenue and our interest earned, three thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars.
And it looks like I've had visiting judges come in to do my job, and I went over budget, but if a lawyer requests or moves the court to appoint a statutory probate judge, by law, I have to appoint one, and they were kind of at the, at their mercy as to what they charged, and I think during that budget year, we had two. So, that line item is budgeted at either two thousand or twenty-five hundred. It looks like, well, it not looks like it. Yeah, I did go over three thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars, but that is not me bringing somebody else in as a visiting judge to do my job. If a statutory probate judge is required, I have to appoint one, and that's the reason it went over.
In the Commissioners Court, we're increasing an expense banking service by thirty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and we're offsetting that by the interest earned in the same amount. Blood planes, we increased the expense professional fees by one thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and we offset that by the interest earned in the same amount. District Clerk, we increased her office supplies by two thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars, and we offset that by increasing her revenue District Clerk fees by two thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. The District Attorney, we increased the outside service appeals by twelve thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars. We increased her software purchase by two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, and we offset that by the interest earned, in the total of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. Election expense, we created an account, retirement, for two hundred and eighty dollars. We created a supplemental debt for four dollars, and we took that from the FICA tax, in the total of two hundred and eighty-four dollars. The Treasurer, these were payroll accruals in her department. This, the salary elected official line item increased by ninety-six dollars, the assistant by forty-eight, the clerical by forty-one, retirement by twenty-seven, state unemployment by four, and dental insurance by three hundred and ten. For a total of five hundred and twenty-six, by increasing the interest earned revenue line item. The Sheriff's Law Enforcement Budget, the salary dispatchers had to be increased by eleven thousand, thirty-one dollars. The salaries, law enforcement overtime by sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars, and we offset that by the jail, taking it from the salaries correctional officers, in a total amount of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars. In the Health Unit, we created an auto purchase for a dollar, and we took that from the miscellaneous account. Senior Services, we increased the Batson Senior Citizen Building Maintenance Line Item by three thousand, seven hundred and fifty, and we offset that by the interest earned. Transfers out, we created a transfer to the Hurricane Safe Room for twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars, and we took that from the Grand Administration expense in Commissioners Court Budget by the same amount. The Jury Fund, we increased the Pauper Attorney Adult Felony by twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents, and we took that from the Jury Fund balance. CPS, we created a Pauper Attorney Other Line Item for eighty dollars, and we took that from the Attorney Non-Parent by that amount.
Are there any questions before we move on to the second page?
The Jury County Court, we increased the Pauper Attorney Adult Felony in the three hundred and fifty-six by forty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars, and we took it from the County Court. The Petty Jury, two thousand, five hundred and ten. The Pauper Attorney Adult Misdomina, twenty-four thousand, two ninety-one. Pauper Attorney Juvenile, twenty-four hundred. Pauper Mental Exams, three thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Visiting Court Reporter, six thousand, ninety-nine dollars. Transcript Indigent, a thousand. Miscellaneous, four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. We transferred to the three hundred and fifty-sixth District Court, under the Pauper Attorney Adult Felony, forty-five thousand, four hundred and, forty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars, and we took it from Jury, eighty-eighth District Court. The Petty Jury, five thousand. Grand Jury, two thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. Pauper Attorney Adult Misdomina, a thousand. Pauper Attorney Juvenile, sixty-three hundred. Pauper Mental Exams, seventy-five hundred. Pauper Attorney OAG, thirty-nine, twenty-five. Visiting Court Reporter, a thousand. Visiting Bailiff, a thousand. Pauper Attorney Adult Felony, nine thousand, six hundred and sixteen. Transcripts Indigent, twenty-five hundred. Miscellaneous, five thousand. The Law Library, we increased the expenses on the Law Library books by twenty-one hundred, and we increased the revenue, County Court, County Court revenue by that amount. Election Equipment Fund, we created a transfer to the Haba Security by forty-one dollars, and we took that from the miscellaneous account. The Sheriff Dispatch, Department Dispatcher Fund, seven thirty-five. We have increased the salaries for the dispatcher by fourteen thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars. FICA, eight twenty-four. Health, thirteen, two eighty. Retirement, twenty-two, sixty-four. State Unemployment Tax, twenty-seven. Supplemental, seventeen. And we took that from Workers Comp in seventy-four dollars. Dental Insurance, a hundred and twenty-three. Life Insurance, twenty-six. And we increased our local match by thirty-one thousand, seven dollars.
Is that the money that comes in from the outside agencies, that the Sheriff Dispatches pull?
Yes, we have to increase our contribution. Any questions?
And I don't know if you mentioned in the beginning, that all this is necessary, because you're about to go into the outside audit.
Correct.
So, all of these adjustments have to be made before they begin the audit.
Correct, and we're just booking entries that are required for, for financial reporting.
Yes, ma'am.
The GASP eighty-seven leases started last year, and these are just creating new accounts and transferring within the budgets. This is just a new financial reporting requirement, along with the GASP ninety-six, which we'll see in a few minutes. And it's the same scenario. We have to create new expense accounts, and we're transferring it within that budget. And if it's okay with y'all, there's no need for me to.
I'm just scrolling slow through here, and if anybody has a question or comment, just speak up. As you said, these are all within the same budget. You just move the money around to meet those requirements that the GASP, new GASP requirements.
That's correct.
Everybody see that effect? All right, this is the same, right? Page two of the same?
Yes.
And now, this is the software subscriptions, GASP ninety-six.
That's correct.
Want to say anything about that?
This is, starts effective in fiscal year twenty-three. The GASP eighty-seven is fiscal year twenty-two. So, these are in the same situation. It's reclassifying our principal subscription software and software interest. It's currently within their budgets as well. We're just creating new expense accounts, and then transferring it from within their budget. And it's software and subscriptions requirements. And budget transfers, it's just, departments are able to cover within their budgets, and most of these are payroll accruals, so I won't read them all. But I will touch the, the ones that were not within the salary line items. Roden Bridge Two, fuel and oil, thirty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars, and vehicle equipment expense, nineteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. He was able to cover that within his budget by using equipment purchase and materials and supplies. Roden Bridge Three, vehicle equipment expense, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars, and she was able to cover that within her budget by using salaries, camp, fuel, and oil, and material and supplies. On page two, Commissioners Court, we just discussed the local match for the Dispatcher Fund, increased by thirty-one thousand, seven dollars, and we took that from the Capitol Myrtle Trial Line Item in Commissioners Court. Page three, election expense, printing, was over by twelve thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars, and she was able to cover that within her budget by using a software license support by the same amount. Page four, maintenance, the Crocker Street Building Maintenance was over by eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars, and we took that from the courthouse maintenance repairs by the same amount. The Law Enforcement Budget, fuel and oil was the, the, in the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Subscriptions, thirteen sixty-six. Rovers, seventeen oh three. Vehicle Maintenance, twenty-seven thirty-four. And he was able to cover that within, by using the salaries deputy outside service and minor equipment and supplies. Jail, the fuel and oil was fifty-three forty-nine. Outside Service, thirteen twenty-one. Prisoner Transport, six thirty-seven. And prisoner food was thirty-nine thousand, fifty-seven, and he was able to cover that within his salaries correction officer line item. Health Unit, the medical supplies was two thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars, and travel and training was eight, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars, and she was able to cover that within her salaries other line item. Indigent Healthcare Hospital, inpatient, ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and we covered that within the Physician Service Line Item. On page six, the Jury Fund, the Grand Jury, forty-seven twenty-eight. The Pauper Attorney Adult Misdomina was thirty-four sixty-seven, thirty-four sixty-seven, and we covered that within Petty Jury and Visiting Bailiff. The Pauper Attorney Adult Felony was fourteen thousand, and we covered that within the Pauper Attorney Juvenile, Pauper Attorney OAG, and Miscellaneous. CPS, the Attorney Children's, eighteen thousand, four twenty. Attorney Custodial, ninety-nine fifty-eight. Professional Guardian, ad laudum, twenty-four, eight seventeen. Attorney Adult Appeal was forty-five hundred, and we covered that within Bailiff Transcripts, Attorney Non-Custodial, and Attorney Guardian, ad laudum. And the rest of them, like I said, are just payroll accruals that they were, were able to cover within their budget.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments regarding the presentation?
Motion for this present.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion?
You know, this shows both your experiences, and I appreciate that. I know there's a lot of work on y'all's department, but it's a great job.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Gore, and I'm sure Candace and a few others were involved in that, so thank you all.
Yes, thank you.
All right, item number eight, presentation by Mr. Jim McKim, Chairman of the Historical Commission. And this is the presentation of the Historical Commission Annual Report for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-three. Come on up, sir.
Like, Sunday morning, I'm in the back pew, so I have a little walk here to come up.
Best place to be.
Time's increased by two percent, if you sit on the back.
Well, I like to come every year and give you my report, and of course, express my gratitude. Every one of you here has done things to help the Historical Commission, and I thank you for it. If Ernie's not here, Ernie, Ernie hauled some things for me last year. He, he always has helped out, so thank you all. And, and I've got two members of the Historical Commission, Mr. Kirkendall, and Judge Minton is with us as well, so I, they, they can back me up on my information. As far as an update, I'll just cover just a few little highlights of the last year. We dedicated a historical work for the Grayberg Black Cemetery. That was a neglected and literally lost cemetery over at Grayberg. The museum is, I think, doing very well. When we have a function in the Historic District, it, it does exceedingly well. They had a spring festival last year, and we had over a hundred and twenty people come through the museum. At Christmas, which was actually, they held it in November, we had over eighty people visit the museum. So, if there is a function around, we can, they really come. They will come to the museum if, if it is right there, handy, you know, and we try to get them to come when it's not handy, but anyway, we think the museum's doing very well, and thank you for that help. As, as far as, as new things acquired from the museum, we're always acquiring a few little smaller things, but we acquired some items from Harry Coe, famous sculptor and artist that was born in Lobos. Now, many people don't know about him, but if you go into Jefferson County Courthouse on the west entrance, you'll see some etchings over on the left and the right, a pioneer, an industrial thing. He did those. If you go to the Dick Dowling Park, he is the sculptor of that statue of Dick Dowling. He also did a statue at Vicksburg, the Statue of the Texan Volunteer. At Vicksburg was a statue by Harry Coe, and we acquired some things by him this past year, and I've been real glad to, to have been able to get that. I can't think of anything else to tell you, but my report's there, and do you have any questions of me?
Anything?
Judge, I'd like to brag on Jimmy.
Sure.
Historical preservation is of the utmost importance in Texas, and Jimmy is second to none in his leadership and his passion for history. I feel like a new kid on his first day at school every time we meet, just by his knowledge. And Harden County is blessed to have his involvement and his leadership in historical preservation in Harden County. I know I appreciate it a lot. Thank you very much.
Well, I really appreciate you, Chris, and I'm awfully overrated, I think, but you know, it's nice to have people like you appreciate things that I do, and so, I'll officially hand my report over. Amanda, would you please take it? Thank you, Amanda. You've always been a big help to me as well. Is that it?
I believe that's it. Does anybody have anything?
Call on me anytime.
I sure will. Thank you, Mr. McKim.
I need lunch today. No, I'm teaching.
Item five, considering possibly adopt an order authorizing the Santa Sana Day Firework Sales Agreement, April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and ending at midnight on April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item ten, consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to authorize the county judge to execute application service provider agreement with Cloud Gavel LLC, excuse me, for computer software for law enforcement agencies in Harden County, effective April first, two thousand and twenty-four through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. This money's in his budget. We talked about it last year. This will allow the Sheriff's Office to work with the JP Courts and with Judge Thomas on issuing search warrants and other warrant, warrants electronically. I have a motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I believe that includes the city agencies as well. I don't think it's just the Sheriff's Office. I think PDs can get involved in that too. Item eleven, consider approval of request by Connie Beckton to authorize the county judge to execute CSC Memorandum of Understanding Agreement with Corporation Service Company Delaware Corporation. Purpose of this MOU is to prepare and sign documents and transmit them in electronic format, also known as e-recording. I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And Connie's paying for that through the Preservation Fund, correct?
It's a one-time fee of two thousand dollars for LGS to set it up, and I can do that out of Preservation Fund, since it has to do with recording and stuff, so.
Item twelve, consider approval of request by Mr. Aaron Tupper, Emergency Management Coordinator, to authorize the county judge to execute a Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Lumberton, outlining the terms of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, Project Number DR four three three two, two three two. Harden County Lumberton Detention Fund, including the local power share responsibilities and acceptance of matching funds totaling one million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars, to be deposited into the HMGP bank account. I have a motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. I think, didn't you say you already had the check?
Yes, sir.
Which pertains to current email and website services with County Information Resource Agency, a division of the Texas Association of Counties. This is our annual agreement?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Cooper, saved by Commissioner Young, any changes to the agreement?
So we never had a service agreement. This is the first time we actually had a M O U in place. Uh, the services agreement has been, uh, conditionally approved. They have one thing that they need to change. It's been sent off for them to change it. Uh, the venue needs to be Harden County instead of Travis County.
Right.
That's the only thing that needs changed. We're waiting on it to send it back. Uh, just trying to get permission to get it signed. Should be sent back in the next day or two.
Sounds good. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item. Thirteen, consider approval of request by Mr. Tupper to authorize the county judge to execute D R four three three two Hurricane Harvey sub grant award contract. With Texas Division of Emergency Management upon delivery of the updated contract outlining the terms of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. D R four three three two, project two thirty-two, phase two, Harden County Lumberton Detention Fund, in the amount of five million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. To include the local cost share of one million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. So this is the agreement I just spoke about between the county and T M on that same project.
Certainly.
Certainly.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved by Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And, uh, Mr. Minnick and Mr. Tupper have been working for months on that agreement, trying to make sure that it's correct with the correct numbers, the correct language and all that. And, uh, so thank y'all for all the work y'all done on that. Item fourteen, consider approval of request by Mr. Tupper, Director of Technology this time, to authorize the county judge to execute services agreement. Which pertains to current email and website services with County Information Resource Agency, a division of the Texas Association of Counties. This is our annual agreement?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Cooper, saved by Commissioner Young, any changes to the agreement?
So we never had a service agreement. This is the first time we actually had a M O U in place. Uh, the services agreement has been, uh, conditionally approved. They have one thing that they need to change. It's been sent off for them to change it. Uh, the venue needs to be Harden County instead of Travis County.
Right.
That's the only thing that needs changed. We're waiting on them to send it back. Uh, just trying to get permission to get it signed. Should be sent back in the next day or two.
Sounds good. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. I guess the main thing I was asking there, it's nothing outside what we've already budgeted, right?
No, sir.
For emails and the website. Item fifteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Cooper, Precinct One, for the purchasing agent to solicit bids to overlay approximately two hundred foot on Hickory Hollow Drive located in Precinct One.
Certainly. Certainly.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved by Commissioner Young, any discussion? And I apologize, we didn't get that on the last agenda. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item sixteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Kirkendall, Precinct Two, to rescind action taken by Commissioner's Court on January the ninth, twenty twenty-four. To purchase a two thousand twenty-four John Deere sixty-one oh five E tractor equipped with Tiger B twenty-two, twenty-two foot boom mower for the R and B two department. And that total purchase price would have been one forty-one, one ninety-two, eighty-eight.
Certainly.
That motion by Commissioner Young, saved by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion?
Uh, Judge, just hit the public record, uh, we, we would not be able to get that tractor into the earliest at, uh, end of summer. And, uh, we need to get it started more. And so that's why I'm asking.
Can't wait till the end of the summer to mow?
No.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seventeen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Kirkendall to purchase a two thousand twenty-four Covota M six S one 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 S H D C. Four-wheel drive tractor equipped with a Terrain King K B twenty-two, twenty-two foot boom mower for the R and B two department utilizing the cooperative purchasing program. For a total purchase price of one sixty-nine, five hundred, a down payment of sixty thousand will be funded through the R and B two budget. Uh, line item zero one seven six two two five seventy, equipment purchase. And the balance of one hundred nine, well, this, one hundred nine thousand, five hundred dollars will be financed for a term not to exceed five years. If approved, amend the fiscal year twenty-four budget by transferring sixty thousand dollars from oh one seven six two two six four nine equipment notes. To oh one seven six two two five seven zero, equipment purchase.
Certainly.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, saved by Commissioner Young, and this just goes along with what you said. If you can't get the John Deere, this one can start, right?
Yes, sir. I, I love, I think we'll do more on it by next week.
Right. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eighteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Young, Precinct Three, to purchase a Tracmo ninety-five E V O Kawasaki F S seven thirty E F I. With a flex trimmer attachment utilizing a cooperative purchasing program for a total purchase price of forty-three thousand, four forty-nine oh five. Which will be funded using the R and B three budget line item zeros, one seven six two three five seventy, equipment purchase.
Certainly. Certainly.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item, this is that remote control thing I was talking about? We'll see that in action soon, maybe. Item nineteen, consider approval of request by Mrs. Melinda Harrington, Human Resources Director, to approve amended job description for the trial coordinator evidence deposition in the D A's office. What, uh, is the change on that? Is this the one that's also gonna do some investigating?
Yes, sir. That was the minor change to it. Was just to add investigative work as needed.
Okay.
That was it. That was the change.
Certainly.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved by Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number twenty, consider approval of request by Mrs. Misty Sam, purchasing agent, to authorize the county judge to execute amendment. To the professional services agreement with the Labiche Architectural Group Incorporated related to construction of a new storage building. Uh, this has to do with the ARPA funds that we're gonna use to add on to the storage building or possibly build a new storage building next to it. Is that right?
Yes, sir. Labiche was, uh, procured for ARPA and we're just adding to storage buildings of it.
Certainly. Certainly.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item twenty-one, consider adoption of resolution eleven dash twenty-four proclaiming April as Child Abuse Awareness and Sexual Assault Awareness Month as requested by Mrs. Jennifer Walters. Harden County Crime Bureau's Assistant Center Director.
Certainly. Certainly.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. That was even. Item twenty-two, consider adoption of resolution twelve dash twenty-four proclaiming the first Wednesday in April as Start by Believing Day as requested by Mrs. Walters, H C C V A C Director. And, uh, can you kind of tell us what this is about?
Start by believing is a national campaign started by in violence against women. Uh, the main goal of this campaign is to encourage people to start by believing a victim of sexual assault when they tell you that they've been raped. Rather than going in with any doubt or disbelief or shame for the victim.
And this is something new. We've never done this before, right?
We did this last year.
We did do it.
That was the first year.
I'm sorry.
Certainly.
Have a motion by Commissioner Young?
Certainly.
Saved by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Item twenty-three, consider approval of request by Ms. Sharon Whitely, Health Director, to authorize the county judge to execute a memorandum of understanding between Harden County Health Services. WIG program and Met Head Start, Early Start. This agreement will establish a mutual collaboration that will benefit the children and families within our community. Is this for vaccinations or what's this for? Nope?
No, this is for the. This is for the WIG services.
Good morning.
Good morning, I'm sorry. Good morning. This is for WIG services.
Okay, to provide WIG services to, uh, mothers and children of Met Head Start. Got you. I should have realized that. I'm sorry. That motion by Commissioner Cooper, saved by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item twenty-four. Consider approval of request by the county auditor to amend the fiscal year twenty-four budget by creating Fund One Forty-five County Attorney Supplement Fund. And the associated revenue and expenditure accounts as follows. So it's, uh, seventy thousand dollars for the state supplement county attorney. And then, uh, the other revenue line item is fourteen thousand, transfers from the general fund for a total of eighty-four thousand. And then the expenditures are broken out by salaries, county attorney, salaries clerical, bank of taxes, retirement, workers' comp, state unemployment, supplemental debt, building maintenance, repairs and renovations. Furniture and fixtures and software license support, all totaling eighty-four thousand dollars.
Certainly.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved by Commissioner Young, any discussion?
Isn't this what we, uh, talked about just a couple weeks?
I think this is all getting it in the budget on these, uh, transfers that we've made. It's kind of making it official in the budget. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Page four. Don't get to page four very often. Item twenty-five, consider approval of request by Matthew Minnick, County Attorney, to create a full-time position. Victim Assistant Coordinator working full-time starting April first, twenty twenty-four. Utilizing the R L E grants, S B twenty-two in the county attorney's office at a pay rate of forty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty cents annually. To be paid through S B twenty-two funds. Uh, twenty-three thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and forty cents. And family, county funds that were previously used for the VAC pre-trial diversion position in the amount of seven thousand, seven oh one twenty. For a combined hourly rate of fifteen oh two an hour. As well as pre-trial diversion funds, nine thousand, eight eighty-five twenty, to be paid in bi-weekly stipends of three hundred, eighty dollars and twenty cents. If approved, the current victim assistant coordinator position in the county attorney's office will be renamed to pre-trial diversion coordinator. With job description previously approved in court.
Certainly. Certainly.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saved by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? Anything you want to say?
Um, this has been a long time coming. I want to thank, the director's obviously, I mean, the auditor's obviously been great, but it's been a long time. And so essentially what we approved last time, um, for Collette's position didn't work out. So we had to go back to drawing boards and this is what we came up with. And so that's why we're rescinding the next item was to, uh, to get this done. So it's been a very long time, but we're glad to be here.
Long ago. I recognized Candace, but I didn't see her over there. She don't have as much hair as she used to and I think she pulled it out.
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Twenty-six, consider possibly approval request by Matthew Minnick, County Attorney, to rescind agenda item. Increase wages of victim assistant coordinator by ten ten an hour plus benefits. Estimated to be five nine oh three thirteen from March seventeenth, twenty twenty-four until September thirty of twenty twenty-four. Effective March seventeenth, previously approved in Commissioner's Court on February twenty-seventh.
Certainly.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, saved by Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-seven, consider request by the Auditor's Office to amend the fiscal year twenty-three and fiscal year twenty-four general fund and airport fund budget as follows. All right, so in the general fund, we're gonna decrease revenue in the amount of five hundred dollars and decrease transfers in the amount of five hundred dollars. In the airport fund, create revenue line item of five hundred dollars, decrease revenue line item of five hundred dollars. And then, uh, decrease the ARPA amount that we had previously approved and then we had to unapprove that due to the, uh, change in the rules. That amount is one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. That's a decrease in revenue and expenditures. And then create an expenditure line item, engineering services in the amount of forty-six thousand dollars. That was previously approved in court on January the ninth. Create revenue line item of four hundred and sixty-eight dollars for, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't even realize it's two different fiscal years there. So it's three hundred and twenty-four dollars for fiscal year twenty-three and four hundred and sixty-eight dollars for fiscal year twenty-four. Coming from interest revenue. And that's a gas fees legislation requirement. If I'm saying anything incorrect, you'll just stop me and I'll fix it. All right. Next is create revenue line item from state rent grants for fiscal year twenty-three in the amount of two thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. Next is create revenue line item for the CARES Airport Grant for fiscal year twenty-three in the amount of fourteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars. Create CARES Airport expenditures. It's the utilities line item in the amount of two thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars for fiscal year twenty-three. And then long care services for the same fiscal year in the amount of eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. And that's all to increase, increase the revenue and expenses for the CARES grant funding for fiscal year twenty-three, those last several line items were. Did I cover that right, Candice and Angela? All right. I've got a motion.
Certainly.
Certainly.
That motion by Commissioner Young, saved by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? I would say again, this is all to get things ready for the audit, is that right?
Right.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-eight, discussion on any non-agenda items without taking action, including reports from elected officials in department events or announcements which may be of interest to the public. Anybody have anything to discuss? Commissioner Cooper?
Uh, Judge, I just wanted to, uh, bring to the other commissioners, uh, attention. Uh, the judge and I and, uh, Mr. Del Walker and, uh, grant administrator at the airport, uh, met a couple of weeks ago in reference to a grant that we're currently, uh. Uh, in to do improvements at the, uh, at the airport. And the, uh, numbers that had come out of this, they are extremely, extremely high. Uh, compared to what we was originally told, so we sent the, uh, administrator back to the drawing board to see if they could reduce those numbers. But this is something that, uh, is, is gonna be kind of touchy to, uh, even, even deal with because of the, uh, the amount. But, uh, the amount of the grant is gonna be high as well, so that's something I don't know if. The judge and I haven't talked in any detail, uh, since then about it, if, if we might need to put a committee together to, uh, decide what we're gonna do on that or what. But I just wanted to bring the other members of the court up to, uh, date on that.
Mr. Cooper told the engineers they need to go back and sharpen their pencils real good and don't come back with, because every time they come back, they look, I mean, I'll tire them. So we told them we was gonna stop meeting with them if they're gonna keep coming back to tire our minutes, but, uh, it's, uh, very shocking. And so, uh, yeah, at some point in time, we're gonna bring that to the court and, uh, a committee might be a great idea. Yeah. And, uh, might just say that's going on with every project. So every grant project that we started working on in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, when the numbers come in for the work, I mean, it's just astonishing how much they are. So, uh, probably, uh, we're probably gonna have to have a pretty big meeting sometime in June to talk about ARPA allocations that we've made, uh. Just for instance, we are allocated money to do some re renovations here in the courthouse and the jail. To get some ADA access in the bathrooms and some other things that are really needed here in the courthouse. We allocated a certain amount based on engineers' estimates. We haven't even gone out for bids on that yet and really I'm kind of scared to because, uh, just for instance, we allocated around a million dollars to do some work here in the courthouse. And that may come in three or four times that much, um. Y'all saw the report that we got, got yesterday from L J A on the Saratoga projects. It came in four times as much as we budgeted there. So it's just everything. It's just being, uh, it's hard to even stunt and fathom, but we'll just talk about it. What did I say? Saratoga? Not Saratoga.
Not Saratoga.
Beaverbrook. So, uh, thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that up and it's gonna lead into a lot of bigger conversations on that project and several others soon.
Well, Washington thinks we're building back better, but. Yeah. We'll see.
Did they even think anything?
No.
Does any other, uh, commissioner or any other official have anything they want to add?
So this is an agenda item. It was brought to my attention that my dyslexia kicked in on, on item number thirteen. Uh, that amount should be one million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six ninety, not one million, three hundred and eighty-five.
All right.
So.
Item thirteen, one million what?
Three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety, about eight and five.
So since the number's higher on the agenda, we should be able just to amend it in court, I think.
It was right on number twelve.
It was right on.
Connie, do you have that?
Oh, we made the motion, Commissioner Kirkendall.
So I move to approve as amended.
So it's one million, three fifty-eight, six ninety?
Yes, sir.
And so, uh, Commissioner Kirkendall has amended his motion to include that amount and it's seconded by Commissioner Young, is that right? Any other discussion on that? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes again.
Thank y'all. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
And Aaron, I need to get with you at some point. I've got three or four radios that just are not functional. If you can help me out, because we're gonna start overlaying and all that. I've got my old radio that I can transition in since I got my new one. And I'll get you a number of radios and serial numbers and all that.
Bring them in and we can probably swap some out or something like that.
Thank you.
We got a request last week from the Jasper County Judge to, uh, donating surplus radios that we have to Jasper County. And so that'll be on the agenda next time. Just kind of give y'all a heads up on that. Uh, we do have a lot of surplus radios that, uh, I think we could donate if the court agrees with that. And that's how we got started, people in Beaumont and Mid County donating radios and equipment to us, so, uh, Aaron's gonna bring that to court at the next meeting.
Uh, can you also request Commissioner Stark to come and request that in person?
No, I'm teasing.
We, they like to feed all day. I don't know. All right. Any other discussion items by, uh, Commissioner Young has something to do with?
Yes, I do. Um, speaking of Saratoga, they mobilized equipment this morning and they are putting up signage to get started on the ditch work, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's been a long time. Thank you. It's been a long time.
And the roadwork starts here in about three or four weeks?
They said about May first, so, um, yes, we're ready to get that done.
Angela says she just hopes the G L O will send us the money. All right, they say they're going, like that by the next. Anybody else? None? Nothing? That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, to adjourn, saved by Commissioner Cooper, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.